So we got in the, in the room here. Thanks, Sean.
You're welcome.
In the room here, we got myself, Tim Allen, Chair of Finance, and Bill Mahoney from our HR department. And I see a bunch of other people on. I'm not, um. We got Pat, we got Helen, TJ, Brian Conner, Brian Keenan, Vera Hanlon, Lindsay, Molly, Tina, Animal Control, and that's as far like the TJO Animal Control. So that's who I recognize here. Is there anyone else? Um, that's on there that just speak up if I didn't call your name. Okay, I guess I got everybody. So let's just go down this agenda. We've got a We just had a three thirty meeting on probably the biggest item on here. I don't, I don't think it's on this agenda because we took care of it at three thirty. Um, that was the Tapley Street issue. So let's just go down this one in order. Pat, um, you have the revenue versus expenditure for July.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Uh, tonight I'll be presenting the July Revenue Versus Expenditure Report. There are two items I'd like to mention. The first is the partial appropriation of the Netsco Spending Shortfall. You'll see three million dollars in the revenue section. This number has not been finalized, and just for reference, the carryover in twenty twenty-three was twenty point three million dollars. Uh, we're working with the school department to finalize a number and hope to have that within the next few weeks. And we expect it to be in the ballpark of last year's number.
Okay.
And on the expenditure side, we made the annual pension payment on July third, which was a Monday this year. It's normally July first, but that was a Saturday. So that payment was made on the third. It totaled ninety million ninety-seven thousand eighty-two dollars. And you'll see that in the pension and fringe section. You'll see that we're at sixty-eight percent expended. That is just the city portion, which was sixty-two million five hundred and sixty-one thousand four twenty-seven. Uh, there's also a school department portion, and that is in the education category. And that totaled twenty-seven million five hundred and thirty-five dollars, uh, five hundred and thirty-five thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars.
So just rounding to the millions. So the school department was twenty-seven. Uh, the total payment was ninety, and now leaves about sixty-three. Who was that? That all city or was that partly the Housing Authority or anything?
Now, this is just strictly the city payment. The total payment that was made overall was a hundred and one million six hundred and eighty-two thousand. And that was approximately eight point one million from the Water and Sewer Commission and three point four million from the Springfield Housing Authority.
All right. So from the city was, uh, for the school department at twenty-seven million, and we must have been around sixty-three million.
Sixty-two point five.
Yeah, all right. Great. Glad we made that payment. Uh, we keep doing the right thing, uh, trying to catch up. So nice job on that. Um, anything else, Pat?
No, those are the two items I wanted to mention, um, for July.
All right, great. Thank you. Um, next one, uh, and by the way, is Zeta or Tracy here? They're the other two members of the Finance Committee. Okay, Tracy was at the last meeting.
Um, Tracy's on the call, uh.
I am here. I'm here.
Great, excellent. Great, thank you. Just wanted to make sure. Um, Verizon, St. James Avenue. Who's got that? Anybody here to discuss Verizon, St. James Avenue?
Counselor, are you looking at the Finance Subcommittee Meeting Agenda?
Oh, wait, no, I'm only looking. I'm looking. I get the wrong one. Hey, Sean, you have the, I have the full agenda. Thanks, Lindsay. What's the next one you show, Lindsay, on the Finance Committee Agenda?
It's the Brownfields Grant for five hundred thousand.
Yeah, let's go to that, and we'll, we'll go. That's the next one I have. Who's, who's got that one?
Hi, Counselor. Oops, I'm sorry. Hi, Counselor Brian Conners.
Great, Brian Connor. Okay, great.
Yep, thank you, Counselor Allen. Uh, this is, uh, acceptance of a five hundred thousand dollar grant from the Environmental Protection Agency for brownfield site assessments of contaminated properties.
Is it for a specific one or just for general usage?
Um, it's general. We, in our application, we put sort of target neighborhoods, um, but we can use it, uh, citywide for city-owned properties.
All right, great. Excellent. Any comments on that, anyone? Okay, hearing none. Let's go on to item four, which is, um, the Senior Community Service Employment Grant. Somebody got that?
Good, um. Good evening, Counselor. I, I am going to respond to this grant for the Department of Elder Affairs. This is our senior aid program. It is a grant that we've had for a number of years. It is to employ seniors and to help them get skills so they can enter the workforce.
Excellent. And where are that? And this is the grant that pays for that?
That is correct, Counselor Allen.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, I'm just gonna keep moving. Stop me if there's a, we have so many items on here. Um, uh, just stop me. Speak up, please, if, uh, after someone explains a grant, if you need me to stop or need to comment on it. Um, the Council on Aging Grant, is that also you, Helen?
Yes, it is. This is the Council on Aging Grant. It is a formula grant that is, uh, given to us by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. This grant pays for, uh, salaries for the most part for the Department of Elder Affairs. There is a small line item for about two thousand dollars, uh, which goes towards supplies.
Okay. Great. So these are grants, these two that we just spoken over, grants that we generally get each year.
That's correct, Counselor.
Thank you. Um, all right, moving along. Springfield Library Foundation. Is Molly here? Are you gonna do this one, Helen?
Ah, yes, hi. Good, uh, good afternoon, good evening. Uh, this is for, uh, from the Library Foundation. It's a hundred and forty-five thousand. And it's, uh, used as an offset to the general fund. Um, will help fi, it will fund our Sunday overtime for uh, the Central Library, uh, which is about seventy thousand and thirty-five thousand for, uh, computers and another forty thousand to offset personal services.
Okay, great. Uh, again, an annual grant that you, that you usually get, Molly?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. And, um, next, the Veteran, I don't know, State nine-one-one support. Um, and incentive grant increase. Who's got that one?
I can speak to that one, Counselor. Um, this is, sure, this is an increase to our annual, um, nine-one-one support and incentive grant. It's an increase of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, bringing the total up to one point one se, uh, million dollars. And it goes to offset costs with our dispatch emergency communications department. And it offsets salaries, training, um, equipment, and other relevant supplies.
Okay, great. Thank you, Lindsay. Veteranarian Grant. Okay, Springfield Library Foundation, music programming.
Uh, that's a, of a special fund, um, that the foundation manages. It's called the Rose Smith Music Fund. And we use it for, uh, public programming, um, music performances, um, equipment, so those kinds of things.
All right, great. Is it normally received every year?
Yes, uh, this is the largest amount. There's quite a bit in the endowment, so we're uh, trying to spend some of it down, but we usually been spending about fifteen thousand a year.
Great, thank you, Molly. Um, next is the Burn Jag Grant, forty thousand. Anybody here to speak on that?
Yeah, Counselor, Captain Keenan, Springfield Police. I can speak on that. Um, that burn grant is also called the Violent Crime Initiative. We use that money to work in conjunction with specialized state police units to dismantle drug trafficking organizations in a lot of street level, drug dealing, prostitution, and other, other things that erode community life.
Did you say that, would you, Brian?
It was me, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, is that, that seems like it's less than it's been in the past, but.
Y, y, you know, Counselor, a couple of years ago, we got a hundred. I think last year we got twenty-five, and if, if, I may be wrong, but I think we got bo, we got forty this year. It's up a little, a little, a little from last year.
Little from, all right. Yeah, I remember more the hundred. The year was a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'm on number, well, I'm, let's see. Now I have the committee, um, committee agenda with me. Um. So we're now on number ten on the committee agenda. Springfield Library Foundation Wi-Fi Hotspots Grant. Is that you, Molly?
Oh, yes, uh, that's, um, we have, we originally got, uh, received two hundred hotspots from the Mass Border Library Commissioners to, uh, allow the public to borrow them. And, um, that funding ended, uh, September thirtieth of twenty twenty-two, so, um, we have a hundred of the hotspots, uh, are funded by this, in our city budget operating. And the other hundred are funded by the Library Foundation.
Okay. Right, so it's, it, um, normal, normal business, uh, the way we do business, the grant we, we've got normally. Molly, is that a grant we normally get every year or kind of?
Yeah, this is the second year, yes.
The second year, okay.
Yes.
Thank you. The next one is Vet Tech Grant from TGO, TJO.
Yeah, Laurie Swan, yep, Laurie Swanson here to speak. Um, uh, that is a, a yearly grant from the foundation to offset the one of two of our vet tech salaries.
All right, did you say, uh, Lori?
Yep, Laurie Swanson.
Nice to meet you on the Zoom here, Lori. Uh, thanks for coming. Is it your first time reporting on this?
Nope. Nope.
All right, um, well, thanks for coming. That sounds good. Um. The next one is also in your, uh, domain as well.
Yes, Counselor, thank you. Um, this is the second Vet Tech again. Um, uh, fund, uh, the foundation funds, uh, our Vet Tech, uh, two of our Vet Techs, part of our Vet Tech salary, offsets our sal, salaries for Vet Techs. Um, and we, number seven, I don't know if we skipped it, but number seven is the same thing for our foundation, which offsets our veterinarian salary.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I checked it off like we did it, but maybe I skipped it. I don't know. But anyway, you, so all three were, were yours?
All three are, yep, all three are, uh, salary, uh, salaries that are, um, so, uh, funded our, that our salaries from the Foundation of TJO Animals.
Thank you. Okay, um, number, I'm gonna say on the agenda. It's number thirteen. I'm comparing the two agendas here. It looks like number thirteen, twenty thousand for, uh, summer reading programs.
Uh, that's, um, from the Library Foundation, um, and it helps us fund our summer reading program. And this will be, uh, funded for, uh, the summer of twenty-four. But we start purchasing all of our supplies and, um, books for the program and setting up our, um, programming in the spring, so, uh, this will help pay for that.
Right, thank you. Next one I'm meeting is Community Mitigation Specific Impact Grant, nineteen thousand eight hundred. Somebody got that one?
Sure, Counselor, I can speak to this one as well. This is for a grant for the Fire Department, um, from the Community Mitigation Special Impact Grant from the Mass Gaming Commission. And this grant is going to used, be used specifically to purchase seven dif-ribulator units for fire apparatuses to respond around the MGM Casino area.
Difibrillators, okay, thank you.
I had to say that slowly because I have trouble pronouncing that word.
All right, we got it, and it's very important, so take all the time you want saying it because
Thank you.
Really important. Played a big role in keeping my son alive two years ago.
Oh, absolutely. There you go.
So he is the, um, yeah, he's pretty involved in trying to make sure those are as many places in Springfield as they can be. Um, Dispatch T E R T Program Grant.
This is another grant for fire. Um, the T E R T Grant is the Telecommunicator Emergency Response Task Force. There was a Springfield Dispatch employee recently named the assistant team for Western Mass. Um, and this is for so, uh, expenses associated with the additional costs of that role, up to fourteen thousand dollars.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, next one is fire as well.
Yes. This is a grant for twelve thousand dollars from the State Homeland Security. Um, awarded to the Fire Department and it is to fund activities to build and enhance capabilities that enable the region to prevent, protect against, mitigate, respond to, and recover from threats and hazards.
Say it again, from what?
Threats and hazards.
Uh, threats and hazard, okay.
Threats and hazards, yes.
Uh, thank you. Um, next one, COPS Anti-Heroine Task Force Program Grant. Is that you, Brian? Somebody got this one?
Yeah, Tim, that's me, Counselor, that's me. I'm sorry. My fingers aren't quick. That's us. So the, the Anti-Heroine Task Force is a grant that we take. We work with the State Police Commonwealth Introduction Unit to, uh, offset Springfield Police overtime costs while working, um, anti-opioid and heroin cases. We've gotten that a couple of times during the year, dispersed in ten thousand dollar increments.
All right. Thank you, Brian. Um. Um, hi, Gary.
Hello, Mr. Chair.
Um, we're on, if you have the, uh, committee agenda, we're on number I think eighteen on the committee agenda.
Okay.
Um. All right, Springfield Library Foundation Outreach Van Equipment Grant, ten thousand. Is that you, Molly?
Yes, uh, thank you. That's, um, we received funding from the Mass Border Library Commissioners, um, your buddy, uh, last year to purchase an outreach van, and we are, um, it's, it's a Ford Transit van and has a lift, um, that you can use, but we, we need to do some customization in the interior of the van so we can have some shelving, some places to put book trucks. We have um, other equipment we'd like to bring, uh, with us when we do outreach events, so the Library Foundation, um, has to fund that.
Sounds good. Sounds like helpful. Uh, and you got the next two.
Right. Um, uh, we receive ten thousand dollars every year from the Library Foundation for staff development, and it's used to send staff to conferences, um, uh, the American Library Association, Public Library Association, Mass Library Association. So it's been a great, um, boost for the staff to be able to have, to attend these then, events and have all their expenses reimbursed.
That's great. Excellent. And the next one, please.
Oh, marketing, um, we, uh, we would like to do a, um, marketing, uh, event in the spring, uh, for National Library Week to really get, uh, people to, I encourage people to sign up for library cards in Springfield. So we'll be working, uh, with a marketing firm to, um, to get that, uh, word out there and use our outreach van and get more and more Springfield residents to sign up for library cards.
Okay. And I just, um, so that finishes.
Can, can I ask Molly a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, sure.
Molly, is, has there, how do you track if there's an increase in the number of people who take out the cards?
Well, we have, um, we're part of the CW Mars, um, it's called CW Mars Automated Resource, uh, Sharing Network for Central Western Mass. And we're, uh, it's a hundred and fifty-one libraries. We're a consortium, and they track, they provide all our, um, circulation systems, catalog, et cetera. And we can log in every day, uh, to their website and see how many new people we signed up uh, on a daily basis. So we can look where we were July first and see how many more we've added in, um. So, uh, we're trying to really bring that number up.
What would you say, your numbers?
Right now, we have about a little over fifty thousand people who have library cards, but like to get more, so.
Does that make a difference with your grants, how many subscribers you have?
I'm sorry?
Does it make a difference with your grants, how many sub, how many subscribers you have?
No, no. Uh, you know, I love, uh, we'd love to have all hundred and fifty-three thousand people with library cards, so.
Okay, I'm looking at the agenda. Uh, thanks, everybody, for what you've done. We're kind of going as fast as we can here. Um. I think we skipped to twenty-eight. I don't know what number it is. There, there's a two, two or three more library things that are just donations. Um, could you, why, why don't we finish the library stuff, and then we'll do the, the GJO donations? And see if anybody has any specific to say about those, and then we'll swing back to those other items under orders.
We, uh, we received a thousand dollar donation, uh, the, the, uh, from the, the friends of the Springfield Library. A donor sent them a check, um, and asked that the money be spent on the Mason Square Library. Um, so they, um, the friends, um, sent us a check, uh, from their, uh, account, so we could use the money for the Mason Square branch. And it's really anything we'd like to do, probably some programming there. And then, um, the hundred dollar donation is, um, from, uh, the Pioneer Valley History Group, Net History Network, and they, uh, used our, one of our community rooms, and, um, we, they wanted to donate to the library for, you know, being able to use the room since they are free of charge, so they sent us a hundred dollar check.
Okay, great. I don't see anything else on here for you, Molly, and Kate, um, maybe you're, yeah, unless I missed something. And how about TJO, um?
Yes, I'm, uh, so we have, uh, taken in, um, uh, donations, uh, you know, we're, we're proud that people, uh, acknowledge the work that they do when they come to us, and so these are donations that have come in, uh, most of them through, over the counter, when people, uh, have come in to adopt or received services from us. Eight thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars.
Nice, that's nice. Okay. Um, see, no way to predict it. It's just whoever gives you what, and they give it. Okay, and then how about the Elder Affairs, donation of goods to Elder Affairs? Anybody there? Helen, are you still there for Elder Affairs?
I can speak to this one. This is actually a donation of a pool table. Um.
Okay.
It's at a specific branch.
Okay, that's fine.
At the North End Senior Center, a pool table valued at two hundred dollars, um, from Jose Rodriguez.
Excellent, thank you. All right, so the ones that are left are, might require a little more discussion or po, potentially. Um, so I'm going back to the first order. Um. Order authorized, it's number twenty-one on your committee agenda. Order authorizing mayor to execute quick claim deed for sale of the former Gemini Building. Uh, the building site, fifteen parcels at Morrison Central Streets to Home City. Does someone here speak about that?
Hi, yes, Jerry McCafferty here, um.
Hi, Jerry.
Hi, um.
Thank you.
This is seeking authorization of the sale of these parcels, uh, that make up the Gemini property. It's about two point two acres. We're selling them for, uh, we're seeking to sell them for fifty thousand dollars. Um, the, uh, development that is going there is forty, uh, town home, homeownership units, um, two and three bedrooms. Um, it's about fifteen million dollars of development. Um, we uh, we offered this property by RFP back in twenty twenty-one. Um, this was the only applicant. We awarded it, um, pen, you know, uh, we, we awarded preferred developer status and then executed a land disposition agreement that required a number of, um, items to be taken care of, including getting, um, permitting, zoning, and all acquisition and development financing. Uh, they have done that. Um, they have met with the neighborhood, um, and shared their plans, uh, and the neighborhood is in support. Um, and so now they're at the point where they're ready to move forward with development.
Excellent. And how do we, so we own these, Jerry, before we sold them to, uh, Home City?
That's correct. That's correct.
Did we always own them, or did Gemini own them, and we buy them at some point along the way?
I actually don't, I would guess that we foreclosed on them for non-payment of taxes. Uh, that's how we usually come into properties like this, but I don't know that for sure.
That's logical.
Is that Tina? Thank you. I thought you would know.
I couldn't hear what the other person said, but that's, um, that's logical, I guess. Um, so we.
That site's been vacant for a long time, correct?
It has been vacant for a very long time, yes.
And the fifty thousand, that's not per lot, that's fifty thousand for everything.
That is for everything. Um, as I said, this is, uh, about fifteen million dollars of development. There's substantial, uh, state investment coming through mass housing. And mass housing wanted to see local, um, local commitment and, uh, input to this project. Uh, one of the factors of our input is making the land available for less than market value.
Okay. All right, so we're ready to go with that. We just need to vote on it tonight. Sounds like good answer. Thank you for the explanation. Um. Let's do another quick claim deed while we're on them, uh, number thirty-one or thirty-two. Um, Bill Mahoney's here. We'll get to his contract here in a second, but we do another quick claim deed. We get both of them done. Uh, Eaton Dale Street, somebody here, Concerned Citizens for Springfield. Anybody know anything about?
Yes, uh, Tina. Yes, Tina Quaglin Sullivan. Um, so this property also was foreclosed by the city for the non-payment of taxes. It is a single-family vacant home. The property is being sold to Concerned Citizens for Springfield. It was disposed of through the request for proposal process. This is a pilot project, so, um, not only are they rehabbing the home, but they're rehabbing it with a goal of getting as close to net zero as possible to make homeownership for the buyer, um, even more affordable and sustainable. The home will be sold, um, to a home buyer, a first-time home buyer that is at or below eighty percent of area median income. And the council has already approved a portion of this project because there are CPA funds going into it.
Okay, great. And, and any questions on that? Anything for Tina?
No. Concerned citizens always do a good job.
Yeah, they do, yeah. Um, okay, um, we'll swing back up to Bill Mahoney sitting here with collective bargaining agreement for the Fire Chiefs.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor. I have good news. We've settled, uh, with the Springfield Fire Chiefs Association two contracts covering the period of seven one twenty to June thirtieth of twenty-one, the seven one twenty-one to June thirtieth of twenty-four. The calls on the contract are two point five percent each year for four years. We've updated grievance procedure. We've added Juneteenth as a holiday. Uh, we've eliminated their old attendance incentive program and created a new one modeling after what we have in the IFF contract. Uh, we increased the work week for the Fire Repair Supervisor from thirty-seven point five to forty hours a week. Uh, we reduced the extra tours. This, this language went back to nineteen ninety-nine. It was at eleven, it was at ten, we've reduced it to eight. Um, we got rid of the agency service fee language pursuant to the genus decision of the U.S. Supreme Court. We have greater flexibility, uh, in selecting locations and topics for training, uh, now, which is, uh, helpful with the fire commissioner. We've added this cancer screen language that the council passed an ordinance on, so we've added language to address that ordinance in this contract. Uh, we've clarified our drug testing language, make sure that includes marijuana. Uh, tightened our overtime calculation process. It was every thirty minutes, now it'll be every six minutes. Uh, and then we, um, we addressed language, uh, in Article seven point oh-two of the contract, which is holiday pay. Three of the holidays that have Eves, Thanksgiving Eve, Christmas Eve, and New Year's Eve. Um, the way it works now, uh, if you have, you can't get paid to both New Year's Eve and New, and New Year's Day if you were to work both of those. Uh, yeah, what happens is one person works it and gets it, the other per, another person works it and gets the, the day shift. What we're saying is, look, we're gonna pay the same money either way, and if we can free up a holiday for somebody, because someone else is gonna take both of those shifts, we'll pay them, pay overtime for both. But it's just the three holidays. It's just those three. And that's it. So we're good to go. The union is ratified, and, uh, we're hoping the council will ratify it as well.
Okay, and.
And does it take effect immediately, in passage?
Yeah, it takes effect immediately. Yep.
Now, I just have two questions. One was attendance percentage. What is that?
So they, they have, uh, there's, um, attendance incentive language in the, in the contract right now. If you So they, they have, uh, there's, um, attendance incentive language in the, in the contract right now, if you have perfect attendance, you not take any sick leave at all, I think it's a thousand dollars, and if you have missed one day, you get a seven hundred dollar bonus, instead what we did is we tied it to, uh, twelve years and accruing eighteen hundred hours of sick leave on the books, and seventeen years accruing three thousand sick leave hours on the books, which is what we did with the I F F.
Okay, uh, and residency, did you mention residency? It's already in it, yeah, um, I thought it was just.
Yeah.
Uh, all right, uh, Gary had a question, do you have any more questions, Gary?
No, but I'm, I'm glad to see that, it wasn't a problem getting it settled, or how did it go?
Uh, it, it went pretty good, we had about six bargaining sessions, and then there was a lot of offline stuff, it, it it didn't start right away because of COVID, so it was a delay in getting to the table, uh, and it's understandable from my point of view. Uh, but, you know, they're a good group to work with, and we're happy to get done.
Any new incentives or rewards for being in Springfield?
No, 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 same, same old that we, that we always had.
Hey, how many people are in that?
It's much smaller than that bargain.
It's all.
We're small units.
Yeah, thank you. Any more questions for Bill about that? Okay, thanks, everybody, uh, next item is the order authorizing approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Springfield Business Improvement Districts. I remember this one from other years, uh, you got that one, uh, Lindsay or somebody?
I, um, I'm here for that, counselor, um.
Is that Brian?
Brian, yeah, Brian Connors, uh, planning and economic development.
All right, thank you, gotcha.
Um, yeah, this is the, uh, order to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city and the bid. Uh, you're correct, we do this every three years, it outlines the roles and responsibilities for both the city, uh, and the bid. Um, the funding line item with this is already, was already approved with the budget.
Yeah, I, I remember when this was seventy-five thousand or something, about ten years.
Yeah, back, uh, yeah, probably back mid-two thousands, it was seventy-five, it's been one fifty for several years now, and it'll continue to be one fifty through this three-year contract.
And who monitors on our side? Um, you know, that, that we're getting the services we said we wanted.
Um, it's, it, it's, uh, really a partnership, uh, in the back of the contract are the, sort of the responsibilities of each department, so DPW and Parks are the most active in terms of the services, uh, I sit on the board as the city representative, um, and also, you know, monitor the contract as well.
Good, great, uh, any questions, right, buddy?
Yeah, do they have new members, Brian?
Uh, new board members?
No, new businesses.
Um, so it's, the, the Business Improvement District now is, um, by statute, every, every person, every, uh, property owner in the district is a member, so there's no opt-out anymore. At one time there was, you could opt out of it, but now, uh, everybody, you know, once, once you approve a bid district now in Massachusetts, everybody is in.
And so people are in, are they, I'm sure they're not all willing to pay their dues, but, but are they all charged their dues?
Yes, everybody is charged, uh, their dues, uh, actually, it's been, uh, I think we actually just had our, um, vote for the bid, so every five years you have to vote whether the members want it or not. Uh, and once again, it was, uh, approved by the membership, uh, to continue with the bid, um, just this past spring, so for another five years.
And as Tim said, is everybody paying their dues?
Yeah, for the most part, I mean, there's, there's always a couple that you'll find that, uh, that owe bid fees, um, but that, you know, that's in arrears, that has to be cleaned up if they want to sell their property or anything like any other, uh, uh, you know, any other tax that's owed or fee that's owed, they'd have to clean that up if they want to sell their property, so it does become uh, an issue for those that don't, but it's, it's very few at this point that aren't paying.
Yeah. Great, uh, any questions for Brian? Okay, um, thank you, Brian. Um, I'll take the next two. The appropriation order for taking damages for a portion of ninety to one twenty Tapley. And the next item after that, order of taking for ninety Tapley, I'm not gonna go through this here. Uh, we just had a separate finance
They had a separate meeting on that, I believe.
We had a separate meeting on it from like three-thirty till five, and, um, I'll talk about it at the meeting tonight. Um, uh, in that other meeting, we're, uh, we had Tracy from the Finance Committee and myself, and we had Chrissy Nolley, Tom Moore, um, Mike Fenton, Ken Shea, and myself, um, and, and Tracy. It was a complicated, complex conversation, and we'll try to make it clear tonight on, on how we want to handle it, so. And it's because it's gonna take a lot of time on the agenda, I gotta talk to Jesse about, you know, how quickly we can dispose of the quick items on the agenda, like many of the ones we just did. And how we can get enough time to discuss the Tapley Street situation, but, um, that's the scoop on that, um. The, uh, I could start talking about it, but it, it would be complex, like, in after a minute, and hard to describe, so. Um, so, um, it's leased, it's basically what it is, is the city uses some property behind the adjacent building on Tapley Street, which used to be Broadway Office Place. Um, and it's, it's about our usage of that property. Um, and it just gets more complicated from there. Um, okay, uh, Tracy, excuse me, Lindsay, bills of prior year, that's usually you.
Yes, um, so this is in order for bills of prior year totaling just over uh, just under thirty-four thousand dollars, um, for multiple departments, HR, assessors, T G O, and it's, um, invoices for services rendered in previous fiscal years.
So it's, could you just repeat that last statement again?
Sure, it's invoices for services rendered in previous fiscal years, and we're not able to use, you know, FY twenty-four funding unless we get approval by the council.
So, so this thirty-three thousand, is that a bunch of different things, or is that mainly one thing?
No, it's mainly, um, unemployment costs for HR, um, and then small invoices for T G O and assessors.
Okay, any questions from anybody on that?
No, you gotta pay your bills.
You gotta pay our bills, catering, just us paying our bills. The only thing I can see left is the last item. Um, an order remending chapter forty-nine of our ordinances by inserting new language on forty-nine Chestnut Street. This is the Demore Museum of Fine Arts, I don't know what this is about, um, I can guess from, uh, it looks like a, an exemption from the district or something, is anybody here who can speak to this?
Why is that financial?
So it sounds like it's a historical district exemption. Brian, do you know anything about this, or is, you don't handle?
Yeah, I, I, I believe what that is, is, um, they, the, uh, the museums may have received funding from CPA, and one of the conditions have been to remove, they had an exemption from being in the historic district. This, I think, by receiving funding, um, they're opting themselves back into the historic district, which they weren't in.
Okay.
I think that's, it's not, not my item, but I think that's what's going on there.
Appreciate it, thanks for giving it the old college try, appreciate it, um. I think we've covered everything, um, that item, I'm sure there'll be somebody at the seven, who will be able to explain it, hopefully. Um, yeah, I think we covered everything, if anything that was on here that somebody expected to talk about, but we didn't get to it. We got everybody? Everybody happy? Yeah.
How many items are there, there's a lot, right?
There's, yeah, it's thirty-two, thirty-three.
Thirty-two financial orders?
Well, there were, yeah, there's, there's like eighteen or twenty grants, and then there's another twelve or so orders. The last stuff on tonight's agenda, but the, that, all the rest of them won't take as much time as the Tapley item will take. Um, okay, I'm not, anything else anybody needs to talk about here or wants to? We got a shot at getting out of here, forty-five minute mark with all those items, it's a, it's a record. Okay, thank you, everybody, it's a minute and a half per item, pretty good. Um, thanks, everybody, for coming, and we'll see some of you at the seventh, thanks very much.